And we have Pastor Mark Chumney if he would come forward for the invocation. Thank you for coming.
Yes.
The scriptures tell us to commit our plans to the Lord and He will prosper everything that we do. So, Lord, right now, we come before you, God, and we ask that you would just take every discussion, Lord, everything that needs to be worked through and talked about, decided upon, Lord, and we lay it at your feet. God, we ask that you would bless it, Lord, that you would multiply our efforts beyond any of our skills, beyond any of our strength, beyond any of our knowledge. God, that you would give us wisdom, Lord, to lead our children, this next generation coming up, Father, to speak into their lives and to train them up, Father, so that they can minister to this world. We pray all these things in your wonderful name, Jesus. Amen.
Thank you very much. Take care. Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone here today. We're going to start our meeting with some presentations, the first of which will be Dr. Rick Surrancey. You going to the podium?
Yeah, I'll go. Rick who?
Good afternoon. This is my opportunity to do a little bragging, and we don't get a chance to brag too much, but we're going to make the most of it today. As you saw in last week's paper, Putnam District Schools impressed the entire state with our improvement in graduation rates. And as you saw, we were up to 72.2 percent, up from 8.6 percentage points from last year, up from almost nine points the previous year. So, over the last two years, we've grown 17 points, and I'm proud to say, we are one of two districts who had the highest improvement in graduation rates in the entire state of Florida this past year. And we've moved up from number 66 in the state to number 56 in the state. So, I think that's a round of applause for our district. So, we have an unscheduled presentation, and before I call up some individuals, I'm going to ask our district graduation coach, Pam Brown, to come up and just say a few comments about some of the things that's been going on that's been responsible for that graduation rate improvement.
Good afternoon, Pam.
So excited about the new graduation rate, and I would say that some of the things that attributed to that are our guidance counselors, first of all. Our guidance counselors are the boots on the ground, they are the engine to this train, and I feel like we are the caboose pushing the train along, helping them with those things that they don't have time to get to. And some other things are just looking at all of the data, knowing where our students are, when our students withdraw, we know where they have gone, and we code them correctly, and just looking at everything and making sure that data is correct. And that has been a big help, and just all of the help that we've been getting with our new programs, like CTE programs, when students participate in CTE programs, they come to school more often. When students participate in programs like Jobs for Florida's Graduates, which you've seen a couple of presentations on, they do better. And so, all of those things have attributed to the improvement in our graduation rate, and I'm looking forward to more improvement this next coming year.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask Pam to stay up here. Pam, if you would, if you stand right up here, and I'm going to call up a few other individuals who are responsible for this great improvement in our district. If you'd hold your applause, I just want to call them all up individually, and then we'll recognize them as a group. Kaylee Renner is another graduation coach that works closely with Pam. We also have the people who were responsible for writing our graduation rate initiative a couple of years back, and I'll have them come up at this time. Jonathan Hinke, Jonathan here, yep. And we have Tanya Whitehurst. And Ms. Renee Huff, I'm going to ask her to come up. She's been very instrumental in a lot of our students having CTE opportunities, which has been a big help in helping our graduation rate. And now, I want to call up the high school principals who are on the firing line, and Mary Wood, if you would come up, Brian Helms. Mary's from QI Roberts Junior Senior High School, Brian Helms from Interlochen High School, JT Stout, Palatka High School, John Shelby from Crescent City High School, Keith Smith from The Edge School. And also, I want to mention that the University of South Florida also worked with our team for helping us to design our graduation rate initiative. So, let's give these individuals a big round of applause.
Y'all rock.
Good. Thank you, guys.
Wow.
There you go.
Yes.
Thanks, Tom.
And next, Dr. Coleman will talk to us about STEAM.
My name is Melissa Coleman. I'm the Director of Federal Programs, and I've been asked to share a bit with you this afternoon about our multi-dimensional activities this year related to science, technology, engineering, art, and mathematics. We have made a concerted effort to add more STEAM programs to our school district offerings so that students not only have their regular science, math, art experiences during the school day, but they have some additional well-rounded programs. Some of our offerings this school year have included bicycle clubs, and we'll get into these more in just a moment, robotics clubs, additional school-specific and 21st century-specific activities, coding, Makerspaces, AP Computer Science classes, Web Crew Clubs, partner events, including MOSH experiences with the Museum of Science and History, Invention Convention, and school gardens. At this time, I'd like to bring up here with me Justin Campbell, who's our 21st Century Coordinator, to share some information about bicycle clubs, robotics, and other 21st Century programs.
Good afternoon, everyone. I will be before you briefly to speak, speaking on behalf of the 21st Century After School Program, which I'm excited to be the head of. We have a dynamic group of individuals at seven schools here in Putnam County, and we are working hard to make this STEAM. I have to get used to saying STEAM now, I'm so used to saying STEM. But we have Bicycle Club that is operating at, start with robotics. Okay, so robotics, we have LEGO Robotics that is happening at Jenkins Middle School, as well as we have robotics at Palatka High School and Interlochen High School. Overly, we have robotics at each one of our sites of some sort. On the elementary level, they are working on simpler concepts as far as scientific principles of distance and speed, just to name a few. And on the middle and high school level, the students are working on a little bit more complex things as far as motors, sensors, controllers, and programming. On the secondary level, we have, a lot of our students will be going forth to competition. This past weekend, we had Jenkins Middle School to go to Jacksonville to take part in the first LEGO competition. Although we did not score high, it was a learning experience for our students, as well as our robotics instructor, Mrs. Norris.
Oh, Bicycle Club, I'm sorry.
Not so quick, huh?
Hey, Justin, while you're, let me interrupt you a minute, and JT, you can tell me, but I think our Robo Panthers from Palatka High School actually finished runner-up.
Runner-up in regionals, and we'll find out tomorrow if it can beat the state level competition.
We are definitely going to pray that we take it to that next level. So, Bicycle Club, Bicycle Club is a heads-on, hands-on project that engages our students in a 10-week curriculum-driven program. Our students assemble the bikes that they eventually get to keep, and the Bicycle Club build the confidence and problem-solving skills while reinforcing and bringing relevant information as far as math and science that they learn on a day-to-day basis. So, we're super excited about what is going on between our robotics club, our Bicycle Club, and the other clubs that we have going on within our 21st Century program.
It's amazing. Thank you, Justin.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to bring up Susan Gaborio. She is our Technology Specialist for the county, and she's going to share some information about coding and Makerspaces.
I would like to tell you that we were fortunate to have a Code.org trainer come in to our elementary schools. We have hosted one training at Interlochen Elementary School and another one at James Day Long. We, no, not during the summer, I'm sorry. That was Interlochen Elementary School and Middleton Burney Elementary School. Then, once the school year got started, then we added James Day Long. So, we have over 70 teachers trained in Code.org training. And as you can see, we have some pictures up here with our Code.org trainings, and everyone received a certificate, and they received a box of goodies to help implement the Code.org. They also received a book, a really nice thick book of lesson plans to help integrate it. We've had 13 of our schools participate in Hour of Code. All of the elementary schools, including the Reading Center, participated in Hour of Code. We had, I think it was 19 teachers participate, which was a big jump over last year. Last year, we had three schools participate, so we had a huge jump from last year. Hour of Code is always in December, and it's during Computer Science Week, so Hour of Code is in that week, but we don't just have it during that week. A lot of our teachers take it throughout the whole entire school year. Here's some of our students who engaged in Hour of Code. You can see some of the things that they participated in. As you can see up there, there's a lot of different things we use, like Code Combat, Google, Scratch, all different programs for Hour of Code. And you can see how proud they are to get their certificates. Each of the kids get a certificate after participating. Makerspaces, I love Makerspaces. Makerspaces, they can be technology, but they do not have to be technology. So, as you can see up there, we have two of our teachers, Nikki Hutchinson at Aquila and Bethany Parker at Moses Elementary, who have Makerspaces in their classrooms. A lot of times, you'll see them in the media centers, not in the classrooms, but they actually have theirs in the classroom. And you can see some of the events they have are the Ozabots, the Little Bits, you know, electric circuits, Makie Makies, all kinds of things like that. And you can see the little GIF on the end where the kids are actually having a challenge to build something. That is not technology, but they actually get a chance to build, and it's like inquiry, they get to discover and explore on their own, and the kids love that. They learn a lot from being able to just do what they're passionate about and go over there and explore and see what they can create. Here's some more of them. There's a little Ozobot down at the bottom there. The kids love those, those are lots of fun. It doesn't just, it's not just about coding and technology. I mean, there's problem-solving skills. They get to solve problems, they get to discover. We have a lot of math skills involved in all of this, in the coding, and a lot of, you know, it's just all STEAM activities. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
One of our other initiatives, and I'm glad we have Palatka High School, Interlochen High School, and Crescent City High School here present, has been to ensure that we have the continuum established with AP Computer Science programs at the high school level. And so, this year is our inaugural year for AP Computer Science Principles course. Palatka High School, Interlochen High School, and Crescent City High School all are teaching that course this year with students. Much of the development on that arena is in response to data needs. 90% of parents, according to Gallup surveys, want their children to study computer science, but yet 40% of schools have offerings in the area of computer programming. On a national level, in terms of computer science job prospects, there are currently almost 500,000 open computing jobs nationwide, yet last year, only 42,969 computer science students graduated into the workforce. In Florida, we see a similar statistic, 22,355 open computing jobs in Florida, which equates to 3.7 times the average demand rate in terms of the job force, yet only 2,486 computer science graduates were present last year within the state of Florida. The average salary for the computing occupational job is $78,000, and that represents a significant opportunity in terms of annual salary potential for students within the state of Florida. Terms of AP Computer Science, here are some statistics in terms of the number of exams that were taken by high school students in the area of AP Computer Science. There were only 241 schools in Florida that offered AP Computer Science, which represents 22% of Florida schools with AP programs within the state of Florida. Our commitment from our high school principals is that each one of our high schools, including Palatka High, Crescent City High School, Interlochen High School, and QI Roberts, will be offering AP Computer Science Principles for next year with multiple sections slated at each one of those schools in order to increase the opportunity for our students to enter that job market. We had looked at some statistics in terms of meeting with area districts to discuss AP Computer Science, and what they found is that students who have exposure at the high school level are more likely to go into those careers in college, and therefore more likely to enter the workforce at that higher rate of pay within those careers. One of our other initiatives that we'd like to share with you involves Web Crew, and I'd like to invite Carl Wendell and Stephen Fortner from QI Roberts to come up and share their insights.
Good afternoon. Web Crew is a website-building program, and it's not using a program that you would plug things into, it is actually writing the code for the development of websites. This came about because folks in Jacksonville needed people to do this, and it's part of the STEM II Initiative. Our students get together and compete. In the last competition, we were first. And this is Duval, Clay, Baker, Putnam.
Nassau.
Nassau. So, our students solved the problem that they were given in three minutes and 10 seconds.
Right. Wow.
So, I think that, I think one of the important things, too, is that these students have all gone through the CTE classes, the business software and things, and they have learned some of those problem-solving skills there, and then this is a way to extend them.
Amazing.
Great.
Wonderful.
Next, I'd like to invite Ryan Zimmerman to come up and share some MOSH field experiences and some information about Invention Convention. Ryan is our Science Specialist for the school district.
Thank you. So, we are bringing MOSH to us here in Putnam County. Actually, I believe it starts on Monday at Mellon. We're going to have one field experience for all fifth-grade students. It is a standards-based activity, and it actually ties in nicely to what they're either about to learn or what they're currently, the unit they're learning. So, that will go all the way through March, and it's for all fifth-grade students in the district.
It's going to be great.
My baby. Invention Convention. You can see some of the pictures here from last year. Think science fair without all the parameters. So, the students, they research an inventor, they brainstorm, they build a prototype, and they present that to their school. Select schools last year had a science night. At the end of the year, we invited a handful of students here to present to people in the building. We are partnering up, we haven't fleshed out all the details yet, but we're partnering up with the Putnam County Library to, two years ago, they had a tri-county competition. We had a charter school student from here in Putnam County win. They won a 3D printer, a tablet, and a handful of gift cards. So, in order to make it to a national competition, you have to win a local and then state competition. So, we're getting the ball rolling on that. That's Invention Convention. I don't have a date yet, but I'd love for you guys to come and check out the inventions that our students have.
Thanks, Ryan.
In other areas, we are working on increasing our offerings in terms of school gardens. We have a farm-to-school grant this year, and I'd like to invite Todd Crowley to come up and share some insights. Todd is our farm-to-school coordinator for the district.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'm pleased to be here, thank you very much. It's an honor to be in this position. Currently, farm-to-school meant nothing to me. I knew how to grow flowers and potatoes at my own house, but to do it on a school level is much differently. Going to a USDA meeting back in September and then dealing with hurricanes, it's, I've only been in the position since September 1st. I feel like I've been doing this for about 12 years, as much time as I've put into this. It's incredibly rewarding. I've met some incredible people, and not one person who I've approached has turned me down as far as support for the farm-to-school projects. If they, if they even look like they have, I was told I would say Nikki Cummings on them. Farm-to-school is three things. It's the procurement of local foods, and local is whatever radius or circumference you choose. If you want to go 100 miles out, then you go 100 miles out. My ambitions were much greater, and I convinced Nikki to purchase a vehicle. She gladly offered a vehicle to me. I'm going to go down tomorrow and sourced one out in Orlando, and I have it retrofitted with refrigeration for pickup in the entire state of Florida, as well as 200 miles into Georgia, as well as Alabama. I'm not afraid to go pick up produce for any of our children, and I'm glad to do it. So, it's procurement, it's education, and it is school gardens. The education piece in the school gardens comes to play with an 18-page grant that Dr. Coleman, myself, and Nikki Hawthorne have written. It was stressful. I felt like I was back in college. It was rough. But it encompasses two things. It's Putnam Fresh, and it's a learning lab, and the learning lab would take place over at EH Miller. And EH Miller would be the hub for our county for learning. And the greenhouse that currently exists over at Interlochen High School with Jeannie and what she's doing with that program just this year is incredibly inspiring to me. So, it's procurement piece, it's the education piece, and it's also the school gardens. Currently, I think we have 11 school gardens out there that I could source out. Some of them look like wheat fields from Kansas. They're a little dry and crispy, but I've talked to the people who are in those schools, and I've made arrangements with Mr. Hughes and then Brian out of Aquila, and one of his folks that he's working with, to get partnering with University of Florida IFIS, people who are working with community gardens as well. So, there's some education involved, and they bring them all the soil they want, and we would help supply the wood and the materials to raise beds. But they get the education, they get the know-how, and they can learn seed a plate, and they can grow flowers or whatever they want to grow. So, that's the initiative, but the ultimate goal is to get over at EH Miller, get the education fully underway in a 40-foot hoop house or greenhouse that we have planned with seedlings, hydroponics, and seedlings that we would contribute to every school who's wanting to grow food for our cafeterias. Ultimately, we would have a farmer's market right here on property at the district office with some of the underprivileged kids. So, that's where Dr. Coleman came in playing, and we are incredibly excited to submit this to the USDA for our implementation grant, beyond excited.
Excited.
It's awesome. It's unbelievable.
You know, actually, this came up the other night in one of our advisory meetings, actually in West Putnam, and the idea came up, I think Brian from Aquila was there and just talked about the concept of maybe getting some of our high school ACT students to maybe partner with some of the elementary schools and, you know, working with those elementary students. So, anyway, appreciate what you're doing.
Absolutely. Ms. Renee Huff was a huge proponent of that, and she said she'd do whatever it took to get those kids to the lower grade schools.
And she will.
Very good. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
We even, and I wanted to give a little kudos to our school board members, because we even have school board members who are writing grants to, and I put them on, I didn't ask permission for this, school board members who are writing grants to add programs to schools, and so, we truly appreciate that and appreciate the joint commitment to bringing STEAM programs to our schools.
I won't name her out. She's the one with the red face.
And we did want to take a moment to thank our partners. Much of our work depends upon the generosity of partners that we approach to help financially support these programs, and we have gotten significant financial contributions from partners, including DOE through the Grants Office, our STEM II Hub, which is housed out of Jacksonville that supports our seven northeast Florida counties, through the Museum of Science and History, Putnam Library System, AT&amp;T Code.org, our Placa Airport Advisory Committee has come on board as well, and IHANA, which fully financially funds our Web Crew at QI If I can add a bit on here about on the horizon, we have, we have several different initiatives that I would like to highlight as well, and I'd like to bring Justin Campbell back up here for a second to talk about a drone project that he has been working on that is just now coming on board through an aeronautics club.
As previously stated, we are really excited about this opportunity for us to bring and partner with the City of Palatka Airport to bring a drone to two of our Putnam County schools as of now. Our high school, as of now, who has committed with our after-school program, has been Interlochen and Palatka High School, and we're going to be working hand-in-hand again with the City of Palatka's airport to bring this into our different schools. It's a drone that they will actually put together, and then they will actually take part in various competitions that go around the city of, well, the state of Florida. Our neighboring county, Stark, our neighboring city, Stark, has a, has a club that has already been established, and so, we're looking at not only introducing our students here in Putnam County to things, but we're interested in building relationships abroad that will, you know, broaden our students' horizons as well as our county horizons. I know that one of the main things that we are trying to do with 21st Century is STEAM, and we're on our way to doing so. So, to wrap this thing up, our mission for the 2017, 2018 is to continue to increase STEAM opportunities for the Putnam County students and offer the careers, as well as provide students with awareness within these programs. We are very much on our way with the help of the individuals that you see standing before you, under the leadership of Dr. Coleman, our dynamic superintendent, our boards, and every individual that you see here before you today. We are a team, and together, we can achieve more, and again, we are well on our way.
Dr. Coleman, could you speak to the grant or the, yeah, the grant application we put in with Congress, the $5 million grant as far as cybersecurity?
Sure, absolutely. One of the things that we're actually going to bring you via resolution at our next board meeting, hopefully for your approval, is, involves Project Putnam, which some of our school board members were able to sit through a couple of meetings on. And what it is, is Congressman Ted Yoho has made a special interest, has kind of formed a project, he has entitled Project Putnam, in order to advance many different areas in our county and bring us in competition with surrounding counties. One of those pillars that he is working on involves education in terms of sustaining our our industry and support structures for the county. And what... They're working on many different arenas. Some of that involves enabling us to have access to additional opportunities through legislative action. And some of that involves... And I want to frame this in terms of, like, removing red tape in order to allow us to get things done for the benefit of our students more easily. And so, he's working on that project, and we will bring that to you for consideration at the next board meeting. The other kind of front that we've been working on is looking at some funding sources and some appropriations requests that involve building our CTE programs and building upon those programs that Renee Huff has begun in our county, looking at funding sources through appropriation requests to enable us to have supply money, to have PD money, to have kind of startup funds to build our CTE programs. One of those areas involves cybersecurity. Much of our discussions has surrounded changes at the military level under President Trump that have come about, and the opportunities that poses for us as a county in terms of building our K-12 educational system in alignment to the post-secondary institutions to allow our students to have more experiences in the areas of industrial manufacturing and the areas of cybersecurity so that we can align with what industry is going to look like for these kids 10, 15, 20 years out. So, that's sort of an on-the-horizon piece. Dr. Cerencey, do you want to add anything else?
I just want to say, you know, we're always talking about CTE opportunities and the job opportunities that exist now and how we're training our kids now. But a lot of these STEAM activities are jobs that don't even exist yet that we're preparing our students for. So, I think it's going to be really interesting to see the skills that our students are developing now that will qualify them for jobs that are on the horizon. So, I just want to thank all of you for coming out today. And I know it's very interesting stuff. And I want to look forward to what our robotics team does next week or this week. And it's just an example of how we're really embracing our STEAM opportunities.
Absolutely. And I wanted to lend a special thank you to our students and teachers that have worked so hard on these initiatives.
Yeah. Thank you, Dr. Coleman.
Okay, we have two public comments. The first is Jim Paget from Lift Putnam. If you'll come up to the podium and tell us who you are and your address and who you're representing.
For the good of the TV, TV audience.
And Mr. Paget, I'm glad you got to see all those things because of the foundation and that grant. That's the stuff that we were going to be initializing.
The 2000 STEM grant? Yeah. Well, we were really... Lift Putnam was really pleased to get that for y'all.
That's awesome.
And we're pleased to do everything that we possibly can. I'm here today in behalf of Lift Putnam. And also, with us today is the chairman of our board, our distinguished chairman, if you will, Joyce Oliver, who I think most everyone knows. But I want Joyce to say hello, and she has. Without Joyce's passion, passion for education in Putnam County, Lift Putnam would be nowhere near what we are today. And our county as a whole owes her a tremendous debt of gratitude for the sacrifice and the insight and the push that she has given our organization. So, we're very, very, very proud of her. Now, that didn't count on my three minutes, I hope. All right.
I told you, you can have what you need.
Okay. What I'd like to do today is to give you an update, really, on what's transpired or the history of the Campbell Building since we took title to the building. And I think most of you know that the South Side Historic District Association was passionately interested in this property for a very, very, very good cause. In response to that, Lift Putnam gave the South Side Historic District an exclusive option for a period of 60 days to purchase the property. When I say an exclusive opportunity, it just means that. It was off the market, and it was offered to them at the lowest appraised price that you had received. And we invited them, should they disagree with the appraisal, to make whatever counteroffer they would think was appropriate. That exclusive opportunity period has now expired. It expired on the 31st of December. And they've advised us that they will not be able in the foreseeable future to make any offer in any amount on the building. So, I would note that throughout the option period, we had a number of inquiries from various persons and groups regarding the Campbell Building. And we told each and every one of them that we appreciated their interest, but we were not at liberty to accept any other offers on the building as another party had an exclusive option for a couple of months. After we got the most recent report from the Historic District, we contacted some of those folks that had expressed interest. We told them that the building was now available. And I'm pleased to announce to you today that we have reached an agreement to sell the Campbell Building. The agreement itself is subject to a confidentiality agreement. I can't tell you every nut and bolt of it here today, but I can tell you that that agreement is very temporary. It will expire shortly, and we'll have more information and can answer most any question that you would have. I can tell you this, though. The deal that we have made will generate $350,000 for Lift Putnam over a period of five years. Those monies will be used exclusively for our full-day pre-K program, full day, full year, for the needy kids of Putnam County. And I can also tell you that... And there's a couple of contingencies. I don't see any contingency, though, that can't be successfully resolved. But I can tell you, in addition, that at closing, we will get $175,000 in cash, and we will get the balance... Now, that's a minimum amount that we will get. We'll get the balance over a period of five years in three... Excuse me, five equal annual installments. So, we're happy. We're optimistic. We have a deal. Do we have a done deal? No. But we have tremendous confidence in these folks. They have placed a good-faith deposit of $10,000 in escrow, and we're going to go ahead with as fast as we can to get this done for our kids. Now, obviously, it's got some other benefits to the county. It will go on the tax rolls when the project's completed at over $1 million. And I checked with the tax assessor today. That will generate almost $18,000 a year in property taxes that this county does not have at the present time. And the school district, out of that $18,000, will get approximately $7,000 in property taxes per year that we're not receiving now. Now, I can tell you in advance, Lift Putnam is going to ask you to earmark those taxes for early education. So, get ready, you know? Just get ready. Now, and Rhonda, that's what I figured. Let me... I got only one more thing, and then I'm going to beat my three minutes, I hope. You know, it's going to bring some jobs, too. It's going to bring some jobs because there's going to be a huge restoration and renovation of that building. And it's going to bring businesses as well. It's going to bring some folks who have a lot of vigor and enthusiasm for Putnam County. And I think that can only help our economic climate. But again, the main beneficiary of this deal is our children, our needy kids of Putnam County. So, you know, we couldn't be more excited about it.
What I wanted to comment on is I'm the board member representative on the board. And when I heard that they were selling, my first reaction was, yo! I mean, we couldn't sell it in two years. But if we had sold it, that money would come back as capital dollars, and we would be very restricted on how we spent it. And we're all... All five of us are committed to pre-K. So, this is a wonderful hat-trick that we just pulled off somehow, but it's great.
Just say hat, don't say trick.
It's a great hat. But really, it worked out wonderfully.
It has, and it will probably expose the foundation to some opportunities for matching funds.
Yeah, we're going to pursue that. We're already, you know, looking at that very closely. I think it's just going to open a lot of doors because it's also going to show that we have some creditability... Credibility, I guess is the word, and sustainability. And like you say, that's what you've really got to demonstrate or part of it to get those matching funds and perhaps an endowment. So, you know, you folks gave us the opportunity to pursue this. And as I say, we're very excited about it. I want to congratulate you, too, and everyone involved on the wonderful job you're doing in raising the graduation rates. That's super. And that's part of our mission. Lift Putnam's mission is to help you do that, so.
That will make such a difference down the road, for sure.
Yes, ma'am. I understand. Yes, ma'am.
And the South District, they're okay, kind, sorta. They're not... Well, really, they can't come back to us because we don't own it. I mean...
They can't come back to us.
Right. It's you now.
You're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. And we have, you know, for anyone that might be interested, we have, you know, a record of the correspondence that we've had with them. They're very passionate about their interest. But I can say this. Our sale of this building will not preclude them from talking to the new owner about plans and visions that they have. We just were not in a position to partner with any group to do the cultural center. That's not part of our mission. I mean, it's too indirect. Is it good for Putnam County? Absolutely. But we aren't the agency to do that. So, there will be an opportunity for them to talk with the new owner.
And Sandra, as far as the board, there is past practice for us in taking capital properties that we no longer find that we can use according to SREF standards to benefit children. And we've given it to the county. The Old Johnson School is now the community center. The old Pomona Park School, you know, just... I can go on and on and on, and the old Bostwick School. So, it's not uncommon for the board in not finding what we consider to be the best and highest use and price for the building or a building to give it to the community in some fashion. This way, the foundation gets it, and the kids get it, and it gets the possibility of it being even doubled in matching funding. So, I think it's a good move, and it is past practice.
And I would note that the agreed-upon... The monies that will be generated from this transaction are within 10% of the appraised price. And that appraised price didn't just... Did not, excuse me, address certain costs, like real estate commission, closing costs, et cetera. So, really, we're right on target with the appraisal. And I will keep you... Lift Putnam will keep you posted as the confidentiality, when it period expires, you know, we'll be back and answer any more questions you might have about the nuts and bolts of the deal.
Jim, I want to congratulate you. And I've sat in on some of your meetings, and your board asked many questions or very methodical about doing that, you know, about entering into that agreement. And I want to salute you and your board for such a great move there, along with our board. I mean, our board made it happen back in the fall. I know it had some mixed emotions about that, but it was the right thing to do, and it's what's right for our kids. So, you know, very courageous move.
I think we're headed in the right direction. And if it hadn't have been for the superintendent and the board, we wouldn't have gotten the opportunity to go in that direction. So, we'll keep you posted.
Yeah, thank you, Jim.
Okay, all right.
I would like... I would... No, not Jim. I would just like to acknowledge Nikki. Nikki, you worked very hard on getting the foundation going. So, I would like to really give Nikki a round.
Okay, next is the consent agenda. So, I will poll the board members.
One more comment.
Oh, that's right, we do. We have another, sorry. I was so enthralled by Jim, I forgot about it. We have Morris Sherman from Safe Routes to School. If you'd like to come up to the podium. Thank you. You'll state your name and who you're with.
My name is Morris Sherman. I'm from Well, Florida Council Safe Routes to School Program. Thank you for having me here tonight or this afternoon. So, the Safe Routes to School Program, for those that aren't familiar, began as a grant for infrastructure, for sidewalks, and things like that for schools, for students to arrive safely to schools, not walking the streets and things like that, and then move to an educational teacher-training program, bringing in bicycles and lessons and things to PE for elementary and middle school. So, the reason why it's important, Florida is number one for bicycle fatalities in the country, which is very unfortunate. So, FDOT and FDO... Or FDOE kind of collaborated to create a mini-curriculum for elementary and middle school PE classes. And there's standards that these students are required to master relating to bicycle safety. And a lot of teachers kind of skip over it because they don't have access to bicycles or time and things like that. So, my program brings in the bicycles for students and for the teachers. We train the teachers how to use them, but also, I'm available as the regional coordinator to be a guest speaker in the PE classes. And if there's a higher interest in certain counties, there's funding to bring in trailers that's owned by you guys that we pay for, bicycles that we pay for. And then I kind of help coordinate the upkeep of all of that. But it's all... It's all... The funding's there. You guys pretty much just have to say yes. And as far as a teacher-training goes, we normally do them on teacher workdays or like professional development days or things like that. But there is funding for substitutes if there's... I know March 16th is really the only next PE workday, and it's right before spring break. So, I don't know... I was a teacher before, so I don't know how many teachers are going to be there or what have you. But yeah, there is funding for substitutes that we pay for, reimburse you guys for if you're interested in that, if that date doesn't really work out. But that's what's available to you guys. I just wanted to let you guys know.
Sounds like a win-win situation. Do we need a person from the district to coordinate on our...
So, that's the thing is I have been... I reached out to a few of the elementary schools, and there were a few teachers interested. Can't name them off the top of my head. But I've also been trying to reach the elementary curriculum coordinator to kind of reach out to the schools, but I haven't received any response.
We've got your information, so we can contact you instead of a meeting.
Perfect. Awesome.
So nice, this sounds fabulous.
Yeah. And I also... I can help if there are schools in need of sidewalks or bike racks and things like that. I can help coordinate applications for all that.
Wow, that's amazing. I'll do just a little bit of everything.
But yeah, so, thank you.
Here's the next week or so, we'll have somebody contact you.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, now, I'll poll the members about pulling items for the consent agenda. I'll start with you, Ms. Gilliard.
I don't have any, mine was taken care of.
Mr. Buckles?
I'm, I'm fine, excuse me.
I'm good, and I'm good as well.
And I got my questions answered.
Oh, good, okay, so, um.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
I second that.
Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion passes. So now we will go, yep, into emergency, we'll go out of regular session into emergency session. We have one item and it is the Insurance Committee Recommendation on Well, the Wellness Incentive for 2019. Justification, explanation, time sensitive.
I will.
You wanna speak on that?
Yeah, I've, since I was in the meeting, the very, very long meeting. I just wanna reiterate, this is the same, there's not been any changes, basically the wellness program. Um, the number one focus is to get, uh, screened. And so the, um, if you do not get screened, and this actually gives us a bigger window of opportunity. So, um, September 30th, 2018 is the deadline to get your free annual, um, wellness check from your doctor or Quest. Is, and then if you don't, then it's an extra $50 per month towards your premium on your paycheck. So it's very gracious, there's no reason that you can't do it before September. It saved lives, it is absolutely 100% saved people's lives because they get the screening. And we've had, um, employee after employee get checked right away, get, um, sometimes a heart cath, something, open heart surgery be, because they found some problems, so.
And it's free?
Yeah, um, we are looking at and we will keep the employees notified that sometimes if you do not have a primary, um, care physician, that they wanna charge you a new patient fee. But we're gonna work with MedX, St. John's, and Azalea to look at those new fees because we feel confident that they will waive those. Um, that is something that's in the process that our, um, insurance rep is dealing with. So we can have that answered hopefully in the next couple of weeks and the email will go out to say, hey, if you go to these places, if you don't have a rep. And again, you can go to Quest and that's an appointment made online, yes. But then you have nobody to review it.
Yeah, who are you gonna send it to?
You look at it and say, oh, everything looks good or bad. So, uh, physicians are our number one choice. We really would encourage employees to do that. Again, we're pretty confident that even if you don't have a primary care physician and you have to be a new patient, that those three, um, entities will hopefully waive those charges for the free screening. So it's a good thing.
I'd like to comment, what I noticed was that last year we said, if you get screened, you pay $50 less. This year, we're saying, if you don't get screened, it's better. If you don't get screened, you pay $50 more. It's the same thing.
Right, right.
But it's the way we're saying it, I think we'll get better results.
Right, and we only had 102 that will get that fee, um, assessed to them and they will get it taken off once, say, for the next year. So, yeah, which hopefully after they see it out of their paycheck, that's $600.
That's right.
So, and it's not, it, again, we have after hours, MedX, we have all, we are letting them go in it through the summertime. So there's no excuse except, well, let's just.
Where can they access the form, Nikki?
Um, the access form is, will be emailed out through our, um, our school email. And also if they call United Healthcare or they call, this, this program called Rally, that they get emails a lot. And it tells you exactly what to do and you actually get gift cards, up to $200 worth of gift cards if you actually participate, do your screening, fill out your form, get everything done. It's, um, you get Walmart gift cards, you can choose like several different retailers. So it's all, if you pay attention to your email and if you don't, just call the number. They're really good about keeping everybody updated. The communication's even gonna get better in the next couple of weeks. There will be more, um, targeted, specific emails that address, you know, rather than reading a long email and not knowing what information's important, they're really targeting to where we know exactly what has to be done, exactly where you can go for free with no new patient fees. So that's all gonna be in the next couple of weeks. So, don't forget anything, Mark.
Mr. Bowley?
Just 500, not 600, it's 10 months.
Oh, sorry, yes, 10 months, yeah, $5, $50, you're right, sorry.
They don't wanna pay the, I mean, $100.
$500 premium if you don't get your free screening. And you get about $200 in gift cards, so.
If you do.
It's a good thing.
So it equals about $700.
Yeah, so.
Okay, do I have a, uh, motion for?
A motion that we approve the emergency item.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion passes. We'll go out of emergency session, back into regular session. Am I hitting that too hard?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Fillings are falling out.
Okay, um, now we have, we have no unfinished business, we have no new business. So it's time for our board reports. I'll start with Ms. Jorgensen.
We had the worst expulsion day in the history of Putnam County Schools this morning. We really did. It was absolutely awful. And I do believe that the board members will be hearing from, uh, one set of parents individually. And I just urge you, please, to speak with the principal before you make your mind up about anything. That's all I'm gonna say about it. Before you decide anything, please speak with the principal involved. But I do believe that you'll be getting contacted by, by parents. They were, I was in tears, they were difficult, they were hard, they were awful. But we did expel seven students this morning. And, you know me, I'm the softie. And I voted yes on all but one. And that I wanted worse, not easier. But, um, cyberspace, social media is becoming really a dangerous, dangerous thing. And our students don't realize it. And they say stupid things that go out to thousands and cause mass hysteria. So, uh, you know, we've got to talk to our, our teens and even younger about the, 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 really the dangers of social media and how once you type it and hit it, it's gone forever. It's there, it's out there and it's maybe not gonna be interpreted the way you intended. So make sure you're clear about your words as well. So that's, wait, I have a wrist, I think I had something, oh, I'm so excited about STEAM, adding art. Oh, that's so important. It really will round out, well-rounded students with adding art into, into all that. So I'm very excited and happy about that and I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Cummings?
Um, yes, I'm excited about the STEM, the STEM to Hub, um, partnership that Dr. Coleman has established. And I've had a chance to meet with, um, it's a tri-county STEM initiative that you have no idea all the jobs that people are begging for and especially women and girls. So I think it's a great thing, these after-school clubs are more and more, um, popular even in elementary schools. And we, and I know a couple of schools even have like, you know, like girls' club, we have the girls running. And so I'm like, let's do some girls' STEM. And it's exciting to see kids get excited about learning and science. And Farm to School is great, um, that's an exciting program to watch. And it's, it's really gonna be, um, explosive when kids get excited about growing and course drones. So I'm excited about science, so, that's all I have. Science is good, let's keep it rolling.
Mr. Buckles?
Uh, I did attend Billy Bennett's funeral today and I was very, uh, I guess overwhelmed with the community support and people that I've known and I haven't seen in 40 or 50 years that came home to wish him to, uh, uh, off and, and to his next stage. And, uh, he was a fine man. I received a call from the Palaca newspaper last week and I thought it was Scott. And I sent down to the newsroom and it was Andy and we were able to work in some calls. But I was fortunate enough to grow up adjacent to the ball field and I was, time I was big enough to walk, I was carrying footballs around for Rabbit Smith and Coach Bennett. And I was kind of a very lucky young man and then I got to ride with him to ball games in high school and, but even before I was a student. So, uh, we, we'd go to out-of-town ball games and things, so I was, I was lucky. But Palaca lost a true, true champion of children today or in the, in the past week and, uh, funeral was today. But anyway, uh, it, he impacted many lives as, as all of our teachers and educators do in their own ways. So, uh, I just wanted to add that. I will be attending the legislative session in Tallahassee. Many of you won't be, I know, but, um, the superintendent has, and, and you can't for certain reasons, like I've missed meetings before and some of you have too and, but I, I'm gonna, I follow up on some, uh, package our superintendent has together on the, uh, uh, some of the vocational needs that we're working on and, uh, some of the legislative appropriations that, that I know you've read and talked about for the whole board. And I'm very excited about that and I'll, I will be going up and I'll stay in touch with all of you and let you know what goes and.
How much money you get?
Well, you know, it's like, it never is enough, but you, you, you try and if you don't try, you don't.
You don't get it, exactly.
And, uh, but anyways, I'll be, I'll be in touch with you on that and try to represent you, each of you on that. Uh, discipline, Ms. George, Jorgensen just mentioned that. I am, you know, it, I, I think I know a little bit about what the, the, uh, situation is that you're describing, but, uh, I, we will, I will still be wanting a workshop sometime this spring on discipline and in ways that we can find that we can maintain a safe, orderly learning environment and still hold a hard line on discipline. And, you know, whether it's through sweat and law enforcement or however we do it, we, we need to get our ducks in a row that we don't have to put up with things that we shouldn't have to put up with. And, and the last is, is I listened to the presentation on the drones and, and Rick made a statement that I've heard before on, on we're preparing children for jobs that don't exist. It, the drone thing is, it, the whole mention of technology is gonna take another quantum leap here pretty soon and it already has, but it's really going. And I'm so excited to see Dr. Coleman and our, our team, you know, working together to put the best programs forward for all students. So that's it, that'll conclude.
Okay, Ms. Gilliard?
Real quick, just wanna piggyback on what Mr. Buckles mentioned in regards to the celebration of Coach Bennett's life. I too got an opportunity to, uh, attend that celebration. Uh, I had an opportunity to visit him every day while he was in the hospital as one of the chaplains for the Putnam Community Hospital. And as he was in the, in ICU in the hospital, he asked me a question about the young black male. And even on his sick bed, he was concerned with the plight of our young men, of the young black male. And so we had an opportunity to talk and, and things like that. And so to hear his life, uh, shared by the various speakers, uh, we know that we truly lost a legend. But, uh, I'll segue right into what happened at the MLK program. One of the ladies that was there held up a sign that just simply stated, "Love is the answer." And I believe that's what kept, uh, coming to the forefront as they talked about Coach Bennett and his love for our young people, his love for coaching, his love for community and his love for God. And so with the MLK Day and all of that committee and what they have put together to help our children, not just to think that this is a black thing, but this is a community thing. And when we all come together and work together as one, we can truly accomplish much. To the graduation coaches, to the principals, to all of those involved in helping us to get where we are and keep the momentum moving with our graduation rate, two thumbs up. Uh, Palacapanthers are 17-0 and still rolling and tonight they will be playing, um, Crescent City. So, you know, I'll just sit and watch, I want to.
I went last night.
Then I did get a call sometime ago from a concerned grandparent about the safety of students. It appears there was an accident at, uh, one of the concession stands and it appeared the child was left alone, uh, to sort of man the, I, I won't say the booth, but to man the, the cooking area, whatever. But we just wanna be conscious of that and make sure that we do everything within our power to assure that our children, I'll say, they may be big, but they're still children and we have to take care of them. Uh, for the Central Putnam Ministerial Association, uh, we're trying to take that burden off Mrs. Carmody and whomever else is involved in arranging for the invocation to be delivered. Uh, we have put together a list, they are signing up and we're gonna make sure that it works so that there is someone here from that committee at all times to deliver the invocation because they are concerned too about education, about our community. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Ms. Gilliard. Um, the first thing I wanna do, say before I forget it is, board members, don't forget, we have master board training next Tuesday, um, the 23rd, at, from 9:30 to 1:30 at Federal Programs Building. And I'd like to see you immediately after this meeting, if I could, to ask you a couple of things.
Yeah, executive session.
Uh, yeah, I'm, oh, that's after our reports. Yeah, so after executive session, I need to, to just speak to y'all if you don't mind. Um, the graduation rates, gosh, that's so exciting. And I was thrilled when Ms. Brown mentioned guidance counselors, um, because I do know how, how hard they work and it's just, they hit the ground running every morning and, you know, they oftentimes don't, uh, get to do anything but see students every minute, every minute, every minute. So the graduation coaches I know have been such a, um, a help to them in, um, helping push these ones that just fight us every step of the way, push them across the graduation field to get that diploma. And those are the things that have helped us get our graduation rates up. Um, I'm thrilled about it. Um, Coach Bennett, wow, uh, you know, there's not much more to say, uh, other than what Sandy and David have said, except I will tell you that he came to Palaca when my father was superintendent of schools in 1955, which also was the year I was born. And I don't ever know a time when the Bennetts weren't in my life, um, through either, uh, I attended Palaca South High School and he coached there. I, uh, went to church with Coach Bennett. I, uh, taught with Coach Bennett at Palaca High School. And it was wonderful getting to know him on a different level when I worked with him there. And then we've just been really, really close since then. And, um, what a prince, what a guy. You, you, they just don't make them like that much. And, and his celebration of his life today was just inspiring to see so many former athletes that have come back, flew in from, uh, Washington DC, Thomas Williams and, uh, Lee Parkinson flew in from Tennessee. They just came from everywhere to honor him. It was wonderful. Um, I've been visiting some schools, uh, a lot of elementary schools. Gosh, our teachers are doing great things in those schools. It's so exciting to see and those kids. Ms. Gilliard and I got a, a precious thank you note today from a pre-K class, Ms. Blank's pre-K class, thanking us for visiting, um, their class. And it just makes it all worthwhile. It was, that was a great thing that, um, Lucy set up for us. Um, I was glad to be a part of the Martin Luther King Celebration yesterday along with Ms. Gilliard. Uh, it was a, it was an inspiring, an inspiring morning. And then we went back down and I got to eat Darryl Polite BBQ. Uh, we had our first, uh, Palaca Panther fundraiser with our new head coach, Willie Fells. And that, that was a wonderful, wonderful morning down on that cold waterfront. You know, these STEAM initiatives, gosh, where's Dr. Coleman? How do you keep up with all these things? It's amazing, you've got a, a lot of people helping you, I guess, and, well, we saw, uh, working. And I just wanted to mention something. Couple of years ago, Ms. Carmody and I and some other people went to, where'd we go, Atlanta? Atlanta. And the guest speaker there was the most, one of the most inspiring people I've ever heard talk. And her whole speech was about Girls Can Code. And I really didn't even know what coding was, to tell you the truth. And y'all, that's, that's where it's at, that's where we're headed. And that fact that we're starting these initiatives with our children is, is wonderful. And I think that's all I have.
May I say one more thing?
Yes, you may.
Excuse me, um, regarding the expulsion committee. The board served as the committee, so you know how it goes. And at that time, we had Solution Center over here. So we had an option. If the kid seemed to be a good kid and made a stupid mistake, instead of expulsion, we could put him over at Solution Center. With long-term suspension, our Solution Centers. With long-term suspension, our solution centers are in our high schools, and that eliminates that option. If we don't want to expel, we can't put him back in their school with the other kids. You understand, if they've, if they've done something where the principal wants them off the campus, we have no alternative but to expel.
So the in-school suspension isn't one of the options anymore? I thought we was just.
If the principal wants the student off the campus, and we felt like the, there were two incidents this morning, the, the committee felt like we didn't really want to expel, but we couldn't put them back on the campus. You have to send a message sometimes to the other students.
So there was no choice.
So we had no choice except expelling, there were, there were no options in that place.
So there's not isolated in-school suspension, that's not part of the, the general population?
They ride the bus, they.
Yeah, but.
Well, they're monitored, the minute they come on campus, the minute they leave, so it is a more restrictive environment for them.
It's more restrictive, yes, but some incidents, you just.
The law used to be that a teacher could require or request and demand that a child that created a problem could be removed from their classroom. I think that law has changed somewhat, Charlie, but, I mean, even principals, when a principal tells you this child needs to go, that's one thing, but when they say, I'm just following what the policy is, I would like to see the kid get a break, then, then you're, then you're between, you know, following what's fair to everybody and what's not, and that puts everybody in a tough position, but.
Well, this principal showed up and said, I gave him the highest I could, if there was something higher, I would have done more, so.
What do you mean, high, highest?
A year and a half expulsion.
You can do.
I recommended a year and a half, that's the most terrible thing I could do. He wants to make a statement, and we agreed, a statement needed to be made, but we couldn't save the kid with Solution Center, because he would be going back into his high school, and all the kids would know he's back in the high school, and no statement would be made, except it's okay to do what he did, because you come right back to the high school, you're just separated, and you can't do that.
Hopefully we'll have a good workshop and get all our questions straightened out, it would be.
But I just want to put Solution Center off campus back, and I'm not saying we should do it or have to do it, I'm just planting a seed in those brains that still grow seeds. Thank you.
I just wanted to say a Happy New Year to all the board members, superintendent, and everything is going well in the legal department.
Happy New Year.
Thank you, thank you. Babies are okay?
They are.
Good, good. After this meeting, I'm heading to Tallahassee, and Mr. Buckle said, we've got an appropriation request out there, and hopefully we're going to be successful in that, help fund our CTE programs. Also want to check to see what the status is of some of the educational funding, so we'll be talking to our legislative delegation while we're up there. I too went to the Martin Luther King Walk, and what a great community event yesterday, it was great. I do want to talk about STEAM, want to mention that the art side of that, we do have a presentation or performance coming up from Jenca's Middle School, they, they have a tradition now in February around Valentine's Day, doing a presentation at the Jen Pignato Theater, and it's called Maggie Flutterby and the Great Jungle Adventure. So that's going to be February 14th through 16th. If you get a chance, the two matinees are on the 14th, 15th, and the night show on the 16th is at 7:00 PM, so I urge you to come out.
And I, I'm sorry, I did want to mention this Friday night at Price Middle, we were all invited to creative art, and that's at 6:00 PM this Friday, so that sounds, it's a great patriotic art show.
Right. Well, they did that last year too, it was great.
Yeah.
I bought me a little picture or something, so that was great. Also, next week's literacy week, and I don't know if you saw the email, but invited to go to CLO, the sixth grade center, to do some reading. Tomorrow, I'll send an email out, if you get a chance, I think, like from 9:00 to 1:00, you can go and read to some of the kids, so if you get a chance, come out and do that. And just another shout out to our, not only our secondary, but also understanding our graduation rate, it's a short-term project, it's also a long-term project, and Jim Padgett mentioned how important pre-K is, but our elementary schools are contributing to our improvement and graduation rate every day. Because if these kids aren't on grade level, you know, they're not going to graduate on time, so this is a true pre-K to 12 initiative, and just a big shout out to our entire system, because we're all working together to make it happen.
Well, wow, I'll say this, while you're in Tallahassee tomorrow, my niece, Jael Jarro from Crescent City, she's there serving as a page for Senator Perry, she left yesterday.
Very good.
Yes, so she's on the hill.
Yep, she's part of our JFT program, y'all. She spoke here, remember, so, quite a young lady.
She better.
That's all I have.
Okay. So I think, we'll take a five-minute recess for those that need to leave before we start our executive session.